Today, but we are going to go ahead and call to order the June sixth. Work session for the Parks Commission meeting. I will start out with a roll call in the room. Greg, if you want to start.
I'm Greg Gavlin, Operations Administrator, City of Kuz Bay.
Jennifer Horsting, City of Kuz Bay.
Lance Noel, City of Kuz Bay.
Eric Clough, Parks Commission.
Kurt Denver, Parks Commission.
Coco Sutton, Parks Commission.
Tammy Faraday, Parks Commission.
Carmen Matis, Parks Commission.
Heidi Scott, Parks Commission.
Beverly Myers, Parks Commission.
Amy Advent, City of Kuz Bay.
Kristen Tencks, City of Kuz Bay.
Mike Bata, City of Kuz Bay.
Dean Lundy, City of Kuz Bay.
Cricket Sol, Kuz Bay.
Thank you so much. And our first or second item here is public comment. We have quite a few guests today. Are do we have any public comment from guests?
I have comments.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Um, I've been coming to a few of these meetings. I was wondering if if at all meetings, there could be a certain amount of time allocated to discuss bikes. And bike infrastructure, because sometimes I've been sat through a bunch of everything and have never been able to come up over my three minutes of glory. So I was just wondering if there's any way in there, we could say that, yes, we can come here and we can discuss things that need to happen with the bike infrastructure. On the side of that structure within the city. And whether we use a fifteen minutes or not, but I'd like it to be, if we could have some time allocated for that. And another thing too is um. Bike racks is a big shortage of places to lock your bike up. You know what I mean? You can spend a two thousand dollars on a bike, but it's no good unless you can lock it up somewhere. And I understand on the, you know, on the bylaws, there's a city is supposed to provide ball racks, you know, on city property. But a lot of times it seems to be running short. And if we do get any city bike racks, a lot of bike racks I've seen around town are are wheel benders. You know, you stick a wheel in there and it gives you the taco at the end of the plate, you know, and you have. So if there are any bike racks going in, I think it would be good to get a lot of people involved in one of the best bike racks to use for all the multitude of bikes that are on the market. So that's my ten cents worth of thought.
Thank you so much. At the end of the meeting, two weeks ago, and I believe it's on, will will be discussed at our Parks. Commission meeting on the twentieth, and we've discussed putting together a bike subcommittee. And and then, of course, the subcommittees can have time to speak at. Our Parks Commission as a line item there. So I think we we discussed that was a great way to gather a lot of information together. That things, the information can be presented at Parks Commission meetings, but that's a an efficient way to do it instead of. All of us talking all at the same time. So we look forward to getting that ratified, unfortunately, because it wasn't an agenda item last week or last. Two weeks ago, we couldn't ratify that, but we can in the June meeting, and I believe it's on the agenda for that. So, thank you. Any other additional public comment?
Well, you go ahead.
Oh, I'd like to make a comment. Dean Lundy. My my nonprofit gives away five to ten bikes a month. This is the, these are the. The Oregon Bicycle Route Max put out by ODOT. If you find your. If you look, you're welcome. In there, there's a, there's a. There we go, there we go. Anyway, in there, there's the, there's a little map of North Bend. And then the little map of of Kuz Bay. On the preferred bike map put out by. By um. An ODOT, the recommended post bike route, the route, route. Okay, it's in the sky. It's in there if you can find it. It says. Uh, who's who's um, North Bend, Kuz Bay, it's one of the little squares there. What they suggest. Ah, it's inside that last flat. Mike and I have been trying to figure out how to safely get from North Bend into the city of Kuz Bay. On that little map there, they show you coming down and going out and going out Newmark. To Empire and then taking this ultra wicked road on Seven Devils with your bicycle.
That was coaster.
I don't know about you guys, but I wouldn't. I mean, when you drive it, you take your life in your hands on Seven Devils. There's nothing out there. There isn't a seven eleven. There's nothing. So what we're trying to advocate with the ODOT. Is to is to try and do what they tried to do here ten years ago, which is connect the boardwalks from. North Bend to downtown Kuz Bay, where there are restaurants, hotels. Uh, all kinds of stuff. Bicycleists nowadays, as as Mike here said, bicyclists nowadays. They're not, they they travel from city to city. They don't want to come all the way down here from. What's the last one? Winchester Bay or something. The next city is North Bend. They don't want to start out from North Bend. And go out in the middle of nowhere. They want to go to town, get a hotel room, take a shower, have a nice meal. Buy some tourist stuff. It's really a good tourism thing, I think. Anyway, that's my, that's my quality cup ideas to try to. Connect. Uh, one oh one from North Bend to to downtown to the, we've done a lot of beautiful infrastructure. On the hot, on the waterfront there in Kuz Bay, and it would be so neat to just be able, there isn't even a fog line. On one oh one. You know, and bicycles nowadays, these guys are going thirty miles an hour. They're on electric bikes. You don't want them on the side. We we want them on on a stripped area. And I've I've been working with this guy, Steve Silva, who will come down and figure it out. Our commissioner has still explained what we're working on. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dean. I know that when the that plan came out, when ODOT revised that plan and came out with those maps. There was quite a bit of pushback and protest against them, because everyone who lived here did not agree with them. Because we actually live here and we know that going out over, out, doing the big loop was not a realistic one. And I believe, and we go back through the minutes, but years ago when connect the boardwalks was proposed, I believe. The Parks Commission wholeheartedly supported that, and it is in our vision over the years to have that be a much more linear connection. Both for pedestrian traffic and for bike traffic. So you're you're preaching to the choir. We're excited. We are excited about that. Thank you for talking to ODOT about that, because up until this this point, they it's been a resounding no. So but we've got a lot of creative people in positions at ODOT now, and so hopefully we can move forward with. Moving forward with the vision of the connect the boardwalks that that the Parks Commission prior has supported. And we're, we look forward to continuing support. Thank you, Dave.
Can I make a quick comment? Mia Mia Poppa, I attended a ODOT meeting a long, long, long time ago. And the and the route for the Oregon Coast Trail came straight in down Highway one oh one and then turned onto Newmark. And at that time, I proposed the route you currently see on this map. Because I ride a lot around there too, and I I've ridden out to the State Parks and all sorts of jazz. Because that part of Highway one oh one is terribly dangerous. It's super narrow. There's, and so the idea was route them around that way. Now, the route has always been out. Cape Argio Highway, because the people go bike camping out at sunset. And and I've actually hauled some bikers out there every once in a while that kind of get lost. So I, but that doesn't mean I'm against connecting Kuz Bay and North Bend. I think that's a good idea. I just want to say that that route was changed to bypass part of Highway one oh one because of some safety issues. And the route going out to Cape Argio has always been there because it was routing people out to out to Sunset to camp. And then they usually continue on Seven Devils Road and come back out on Highway one oh one just before they end it. So that's my two cents.
To clarify, the, this map is Oregon Department of Transportation, which was previously Oregon Highway Department. Which State Parks was previously part of Oregon Highway Departments since the nineteen twenties. And the goal of the scenic Highway one oh one was to have connectivity where people see the ocean. A lot of other towns have additional maps for bicyclists that highlight them, such as the Powers, Myrtle Point. Trails, but that's what this was for, was following that Oregon Highway Department to scenic ocean view.
But just one other comment, this Commissioner Eric from. On on this, the ODOT, the Oregon Coast Route, it was only two, three years ago or so that ODOT was collecting information. For alternative routes and they propose, because they're not, ODOT is not going to recommend cyclists take one oh one. It's just not safe. So, but they did look at an alternative route along Sherman and is that Kuz Bay Boulevard there that comes up there? I don't know whatever happened to that, but I mean, this issue has been looked at a lot at different times, so I just wanted to comment on that.
I think now is the time where we have a lot of people together that are moving forward towards the same goal. So I think that this is, we're in in the right spot for collaboration to to get this moving here. Cricket, would you like to provide your public comment? And I apologize, I have to step away for about two minutes.
So I wanted to kind of report on Memorial Day, because that's our biggest visitation for the year. And it's really busy. Dave and Obam did a great job getting the cemetery ready. That's the only time of the year that we do a. Full mowing and and make everything look kind of well-kept. Because anytime they mow, there is going to be some damage. They can't help it. And we did get quite a few visitors and. I just don't want the cemetery to go back to that orphan stage. Was a little concerned with all the grants. Whether our grants need to be put on the, I think Coco prepared a lot of stuff, but none of the cemetery stuff is sort of showing up on grant things. And we want to make sure we don't step on toes if we go for more grants than that. We're working with the Free Rivers Grant right now. The contractor just showed up today. We would like you to stop them in, please. So I I think we just need to keep keep that in mind as well.
All right. Well, since Ariane stepped away for just a second. I'll I'll just go ahead and hop in and help out here. I think that concludes public comment. Thank you, Cricket. Thanks, everybody, for jumping in on that. Let's go ahead and go on to item number three, work session, which is goal setting and two-year plan. Did anybody, well, before we move on, did we have any information in regards to the grant applications for cemetery?
Some of that hasn't been put on this in the ones that we have, and maybe we don't care. We've already had a bunch, probably will be one of them. Or several others, so we want to make sure it's from this, plays well with others.
Yep, okay.
I think it's important.
All right, well, I guess we're going to move on. Shoot, oh, there's Ariane, she's back.
Yeah, I'm back, sorry. Um, thank you, Cricket, so much. And I ran into Jim Hostly, so hopefully he was able to get you everything he needs on that. Moving forward through our work session, goal setting and two-year plan. Greg, do you want to kick it off or then we'll go from there?
Yeah, so at the April eighteenth, twenty twenty four Parks Commission meeting, the commission requested a work session. So the commission could establish a goals for a two-year period. Well, as anticipated, the commission will present potential projects, goals for a two-year plan. Staff, one of the commission, be aware of current ongoing projects. So, and the staff report, I have several, but I I did reach out to city staff, and so I have a really brief. Narrative that I might to to read, and I'll bore this to you folks after this. So first of all, welcome everybody to the twenty twenty fourth Parks Commission Work Session. Meeting with the sole agenda item as being the twenty twenty, the two-year goal setting. The purpose of this meeting is to set real obtainable goals for the city's parks and accessibility to the park system for both pedestrians. And cyclists, being mindful of both the constraints of city staff and resources. The goals set here today will be presented to the Public Works Director for a final decision. With a form to listening to your ideas and capturing them as they are suggested. Jennifer jotting down your ideas as they're coming forward. We look forward to the work of this body to prioritize the goals. And set realistic goals. In front of you, there's four dots. As we jot down all these goals, this body is going to set priorities by selecting. Your goals, your priorities. Red being the highest goal, highest priority, green being the middle for your second. Yellow being your third and blue being your fourth. Level of priority, so red being your, your personal highest priority, green being your second. Yellow being your third and fourth being your, your fourth pick. As part of this effort, we have engaged city staff to provide some real time input from the boots on the ground. The folks in the trenches to which they have provided some suggestions. The city has two main parks and five pocket parks for neighborhood parks, as well as six other open spaces, which include. Two boot, two boat ramps, the Marshfield Cemetery, the board, the boardwalk, the freeway, and the Firefighter Memorial. All of which are considered for the twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty-three Parks Master Plan as being an existing park trail or recreational facility. City staff has suggested the following goals for the commission to consider for the parks. Replace the bathrooms at the Mingus Park. Rehabilitation bathrooms at the softball fields. Look for alternative funding sources. Finalize the Cheryl's project. For that project, A is to identify the alternate, and staff can get. Can get a cost for the design with the understanding that there's not a funding mechanism placed for this effort at this point in time. Complete the revitalization for the community building. Replacement of the Mingus Pond Air Racing System. Finalizing the Front Street Blueprint, dredging of the Mingus Pond. Finally, finalizing of the Safe Route to School Planning Project. Replacement of the Mingus Park Stage Lighting System. Replacement of the Midlake Playground Equipment at John Thomas Park. And replacement of the Taylor-Wasson Playground Equipment. Here are just some suggestions from staff. But it'll take, but we will take the recommendations from this commission and and if we're true, if they deviate from the path. This body has previously committed to this. So this is just some suggestions from staff. And we'll jot all these up on the the board as well, but as we take in some suggestions from from you folks.
Can I, can I just add on to that? These are suggestions from staff, but there are several projects that Greg mentioned, that we're already in the process of design. So the the Front Street Blueprint, we're already, we're already at thirty percent design for the northern half of those limits. Cheryl, we have an alternative analysis. Can I see the list? The Mingus Park Restrooms, we have a very large grant into the local government grant program. And we are to the third stage of this election process, so we're excited about that. Let's see, Sapers to School, we were awarded that grant. We are in the process. We're gathering our project management team as we speak. We might talk about that either later today or at the the meeting this month. Think that those are all. Thank you. I thank you so much. The Mingus Park Community Hall, always known as the Scout Cabinet, formerly known as the Scout Cabinet. We received, so far we received thirty thousand dollars in grants to stabilize that foundation. Now we need about seventy-five more. But we're on our path. So we just want to let you know that there are some of these projects that are already in the queue and we are actively working to them.
Right, so I have a question. How do we dovetail the things that are already in motion? And how do we organize the priority based on things that. We want to focus on that are outside of that? Are we just saying focus on the things that we're currently doing or? How 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 does that work for staff?
So that's why we got this group together, because there seems to be a lot of extra projects that this group wants, and we love that. So please do not get me wrong. We're not trying to discourage anybody. We just want, we want to know what are your priorities? Because we're going down and I'm I'm gonna, I don't, I'm just gonna use the scout. We need to know that. So we, I think we've been very open with you and telling you every month what we're doing with respect to the Parks Grant Rider, and it was one of the adopted parks projects. That that this body didn't have, I think, approved. So. I I I think it's just a time to reconvene and make sure that this group is still on board with these tasks or these projects identified. And and if we can prioritize, yes, four here. You know, and maybe you guys can talk, you know, Greg offered up one way in which to do it. Maybe another way, and I'm not trying, is to, they're all worth the same amount, and whoever gets the most dots are the top four or five projects. Understand, we have two years to work on that.
And those would start twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, or is it starting now?
I say we start it now. Okay, because I mean, if if we're moving forward on projects that you folks don't want us to award on, we need to know that.
Yeah, so that we can turn back the grants to whatever.
Conversely, you guys need to know what we are working on.
Yeah, that's true. It's hard, hard to say stop working on something that you're already studying. We've got to focus, because we need capacity.
First of all, there are a way to, those things that are already in the process, a way to estimate perhaps. Like, one's gonna take ten years, one's gonna take two years, one's gonna take, is there a way to do that and to figure that out?
So the Mingus Park Restrooms, that is a two-year grant, two-year process. So we could say that's a two-year project. And we have two years in which to spend that money. The Front Street, we we only have thirty percent design. We don't have another grant for that yet. Now, there are grants out there, but there's only so much capacity. Let me remember the ones I, the Scout Cabinet. Do I think we can get that done in two years? It all depends on the funding.
On the focus of the funding. Funding can come from additional grants, but the linchpin for that is what I'm working on now. And it's very cumbersome, because we have one person trying to do things. Where they're very strict, like you have to have graphic arts. Most people that get things on the historic register hire a company to do it. Because they have the cameras and the staffing to go out and the CAD machines and everything. The city doesn't have staff time to do all that. So the priority is, if you don't want those things prioritized in the next two years, be honest about it. So we're not chewing up time, because there's only so many staff people and only so many funds available. And once you say that you want that grant, like the Ford Family Foundation, twenty-five thousand. Five thousand, that we do a letter writing campaign, which I started. Uh, but I'm one person. So. That's the question. If that's not the highest and best use, then let it go and do something else. And we need to know that now.
The Sapers to School, that's a twelve to eighteen month effort, so we can conceivably finish that in this, in this two-year period.
So I have I have a couple just general comments and I guess comments and questions. I appreciate the idea of all of our time, because I I think there are, you know, if you're gonna say, gee, we should work on these. Three or four things over the next couple of years. If we know we are initiating some of those, but they don't take a lot of time, and it's going to be outside that two-year period. Then maybe allows us to work on some other things. For, you know, for example, you know, the Front Street Bicycle and pedestrian improvements. You know, that was from last year, and you guys worked up a great plan, and I'm assuming we're just gonna unshell that again. And resubmit it to the Oregon pedestrian and and Bicycle Advisory Committee to see whether they'll pass it on to ODOT as an approved project. But your time investment right now on that is probably fairly small, right? But if it gets approved, it could be very large. And so that's the kind of thing I think that we ought to consider. So that that's one thing. The second comment is, is, you know, I thought a little bit about this before we came down here. Um, you know, the Parks Commission's priorities and goals may be a little bit different than staff's and staff resources. And maybe that's okay. Maybe there's some things that the Park Commission can do that don't require staff time. You know, the classic example is the one that Coco just mentioned already, a letter writing campaign to go ahead and get funds for the community building. That that, we could do that without involving staff, right? And so we could have a list of priorities that's for the Park Commission to do themselves without staff involvement. As well as a list of priorities that we would, we would need staff to accomplish. So I think that's something we have to think of that as well. And then the last thing is, the staff doesn't need me to stick up for them. They showed you all the things that they're doing, and I've talked about them and have the spread, have the the database to show you what they're working on. But the thing that we sometimes forget, because we're kind of myopic, we want to focus on the parks, because that's why we're here. Those people focus on a lot of other things, hot holes in the streets, sewers, all sorts of other stuff. So we shouldn't take, we shouldn't look at what they've given us and say, oh, God, they can do more. We should realize we need, they're going to give us their honest assessment about what they can do, realizing they have other projects as well. So again, my suggestion would be, let's not load up staff with too many projects. Let's figure out the ones that are most important.
And and I think I will echo that. I I really appreciate your comments there, and it's about focusing on staff and. The time and resources that they have available. And and also the the resources that the Parks Commission has available. I mean, we are a volunteer group and this is, we're being very, very active, and I think that's really awesome in moving forward. So I think just because we pick a few things that are a priority and we move forward with them, if a granting opportunity or something comes up and. You know, one of those items might leapfrog the other, this is just a suggested plan attack to to go after these things. Because they are time consuming, and some of them have long lead times. A lot of the stuff you turn the grant in, you don't know when you're gonna get it. Or maybe we'll have to go for granting in cycle two, because we don't get it the first year. So I I appreciate all the comments so far, and I think I cut Carmen off. Or Patty?
Yeah, I apologize. I haven't been able to be here for the last few months because of my work schedule, so. I I feel a little lost, but are we prioritizing by money? Or? Or time?
Oh.
Right, yeah, I'm a little confused about, to me, it's like if it's already in the works, it should be on the list. You know, as a a priority and. I'm so confused, and not having a list that you can see is a little problematic, or we didn't get a.
And Carmen or Patty, could you take a copy of the list she's writing on the whiteboard and just send it to me?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I guess I'd like to ask a question about staff focus. I imagine that there's, you know, all the ideas that come up here at Parks Commission. But then there's also council directives that come down that you guys can task with. And I guess my preference would be to try to. Take that council goal list and dovetail it with what we are looking at and see how we can like. I guess double down on the priorities that you're hearing from both bodies. So to make it more focused?
I I couldn't agree with you more. The plan is, is once we can get this this recommendation on on what the priorities are. The Public Works Director or myself or Greg, we're gonna present to council to make sure that they're, if that's in alignment, what they want to see too. And we failed to mention that step. You're absolutely right.
And I would recommend, and we did this probably five or six years ago, we held a joint work session with parks and council. And that was very beneficial. Council has also has a lot on their plate. And so when we approach them with with things, they might not know how detailed it is or 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 our passion, where our passion lies. So I think that was super beneficial five or six years ago, and we sat down with council and reviewed why these are our goals. And then it takes some onerous of the, you know, city staff on explaining why we got to this point. So if that's possible, I think having a joint work session would be beneficial for both parks and for council.
One second. Go ahead, Cook. What I'd like to mention is that when I stepped into this position and interviewed the city council. The one thematic that I got was there's always passion and from community and people on this commission. Were things that they would like to see fixed because they've been decayed. Brought in because there's something new and exciting that people want to take advantage of. Things that we need to maintenance. They all take money and manpower that the city does not have. So what was presented to me was, we need funding and implementation that can then be presented and and done. So the last, since June of last year, I've tried to meet with my subcommittee of adopted park. Because in a lot of communities, that's a mech. Because in a lot of communities, that's a mechanism that you use. To meet the things, to keep the city and everyone else from being overwhelmed, in other words. Instead of, hey, can I have so-and-so go fix this, or go do that, or go get the trees that are hazard trees that KO'd your oldest. Historic building in your oldest park, can we have a volunteer group of people, not just here? That each one of us champions and says, for this park, I will champion this, so that if something happens there, because it always does. I can have the list of the grants, or does it need to be on the historic place? Does it need to be a historic cemetery, you need to coordinate, so that when you have it, you can get it packaged, present it to the city. And then you already have the funding mechanism and stuff, and you can decide, is this our highest and best use? Otherwise, you get things going, and then you reach this stalemate, because you're missing the manpower components or the money components. And they're all within a very limited timeframe. And the example on that uh WPA Scout Cabin is. If it decays any further, my recommendation would be, you you don't need to fix it because it's beyond repair. Okay, now, that's been an ongoing theme since the nineteen fifties with city councils. In this area, and they've been able to have civic groups take over that responsibility. Our society doesn't have that available anymore, one in four people are not in scouting, one in four people are not in Rotary and. You know, all these other groups that raised all this money, so that's something to keep in mind that's different, that we're approaching today, and we're not alone as a community. Thank you.
Would it be beneficial, because since we have so many things in in progress, and so many things that um are important to us um as well. Would it be beneficial for the group to look first at the items that are in progress, to see if there's any of those that no longer meet the priority or the interest? Um, and then look at them separately, the ones in progress and the ones um that are proposed?
Okay, so, I have a comment related to that, you know, one of the things on the list is the Safe Routes to Schools. Uh, grant application, and I feel like. It's a school district-related grant, and of course, the city's involved, because it involves city infrastructure and city streets, but. In order to help ease the workload demand on city staff. It seems to me like we should lean on the school district to get them more involved, and perhaps become the lead. In some fashion, I mean, I'm not sure, this, there's still a lot to shake out, I think, in terms of how this gets implemented, but. It's not supposed to be a heavy lift of process. For the grant applicant, if you look at their guidance and everything like that, it's the consultant. That's hired by ODOT, is supposed to do the work, create the plan. There's supposed to be, you know, on the, on the ground meetings for identifying key projects. But, I mean, I think there's an opportunity with the Safe Routes to School. To to drop the effort level required by city staff to get that project completed.
I think that that would have been something we probably should have done before we submitted the application. We've already committed, we've already signed that we will be the lead, we will participate, we will establish a project management team. I I I I think it's a great suggestion, I just think it might be too late to implement.
Well, I don't know why it would be too late, I mean, we just need to approach the school district and find out who. Interested parties and and what capacity they have that's available to do this, we don't try. And we'll we'll never find a more active partner with that, with that grant, so I'm just suggesting it as a way to help ease the workload.
So, I I I like the chair's suggestion about looking into things that are in progress first. And so, obviously, since we've already got a hundred thousand dollar grant that's been awarded for Safe Routes to Schools. That ought to be one of our priorities, managing that, it was just next two-year period, right?
Yeah, we have uh the Mingus Park Restrooms, the Front Street, uh to Mingus Sheros, the Mingus Park Community Hall. Uh, the Front Street uh Bike and Pedestrian, uh dating the bird. Uh, and uh Safe Routes to School, those are the.
Yeah, just talking about Safe Routes to School, we already have the grant for a hundred thousand bucks, we know we have to do it. And so, uh that that ought to be one of our priorities, right, because we have a hundred thousand dollars to be planning for our town.
On the list that we do have of these things here, regardless if it's a council recommendation, whatever. If we've already received any grants, can we, that have not been completed, can we have a dollar sign by the item? Because I think a red dollar sign or something by an item shows, somebody has already, usually the city. Committed to receiving those funds, and the choice will be, if it's not a priority, the funds need to be declined and sent back.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, that's the.
It's always an option to say, you don't want the money, but I don't know.
It's better to do it and achieve, than try and then you found it to wire and you didn't achieve, and then you're cutting off.
Okay, so that's something that I think people need to understand.
So, so I have a question um for for city staff, um for all the stuff that's in progress, that's in the progress category. Do we have staff resources to accomplish those items that are are on that sheet?
Um, we we do, that's, that's, but where we, where we got here is. It seems to me like other projects that people want to do, and that's where we're getting a little um. Um, overwhelmed, I'm just gonna be honest, yeah. So.
But for the ones that in progress.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, and so, I want to specify here, this Front Street to Sheros, we did the alternatives now, it's complete, there's several alternatives. We went back and we reviewed um the meeting minutes, and this body did not select an alternative. And so, um, you can look at the minutes.
January eighteenth, there was a motion, it was presented, they wanted to approve the alternative. Yeah. But there was no alternative identified, it was just to approve the alternative, but it wasn't alternative.
Misunderstanding there, the alternative was the alternative to the original SOTI report, the original SOTI report had three or. Three different routes, the alternative route came in that second report, and we approved that alternative route. So I think there's just a misunderstanding of the wording there.
So, we've completed this planning effort, and it's just, do we want to take it forward?
No, there was supposed to be a budget estimate provided.
So, we we reached out to the consultant, the consult consultant asked what alternative. So if 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 everybody's in agreement, I mean, I I'm looking at this whole body, if everybody's in agreement with Eric, that that's how you want to go. We're fine to go back to our consultant and say that's the alternative.
I would, I would just remind everyone that this is a work session, so we're not, we don't think we're really supposed to make decisions.
That's true, thank you. We just need to know what items have we committed or actually received money for at this juncture.
So Mingus Park Community, Community Hall has a five thousand dollar uh Coquell Community Fund Grant, and we've spent that. Um, we just received a Ford Family Foundation Grant for twenty-five thousand, so that's exciting. Um, Safe Foods to School, seventy-five to a hundred K, I mean, there's not like that dollar amount, because it all goes through ODOT. But it's a major planning document for almost all of the city. So, um, and then Mingus Park Restrooms, we don't have, I'm gonna be repeat myself, so forgive me, we don't have um. A grant, um, but it is six hundred thousand dollars, I'm gonna do that, it's six hundred thousand dollars, and we are to the third step, which. We're real excited about.
Six hundred thousand dollar, like, estimate?
That, that was, wait, it's, we feel pretty good about the estimate, because one of them's a total prefab restaurant, so we gotta, we gotta vote for it. The other one is upgrade of facilities, like um prison-grade facilities, and we're gonna do the facade, and we got quotes for all of that work too. So.
But we don't have any funding for it though.
Well, that's, that's our part, that's the grant, but the total project is six hundred, because we have a forty percent match.
So we have to, we don't have the match though, or the grant.
We're working on it, we have several, we have several, um, we have, we're asking for a thousand dollars from the Morgan Foundation.
A thousand?
Thousand, one hundred bucks.
Okay.
One hundred thousand, thank you. Who else are we asking, I forget, do you remember, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. There you go, it's on the list that you have. So we've got several grants in the grant application process to try to stack grants.
Including the Mingus Park Community Building has some additional ones, we do, so. On the subject that we're on now, if you had like a red marker. There was in the estimates for each of these things that we put in grants for. There was a percentage of dollars in addition to the grant money we asked for, that a few of them had a city. Uh, public works amount.
That we should, what we had to match.
Right, and in other words, what? The, which would now, in our planning session, you'd be going through two budget cycles for funds. That would dovetail into these projects, correct?
Correct, but right now, we don't have a dedicated funding source, so I don't see that, that. Going through two budget cycles, that that kind of bucket of money increasing significantly.
Okay, but, but, but for example, on the restrooms, when we did our. Local government grant, um, they said, how much capital does the asking body, which is the city. Have in their funds, because the city has to show their budget, and their budget gets approved every year. And there was an amount that was put in for that, so I thought it might be helpful for this group to see. Do any of these projects already have something that's been presented that the city was going to put in or not?
I can give a proxy.
Yeah, and and it's not, none of this is a hundred percent, but it gives you an idea, so that when you say in your mind, this project we need. I'm gonna throw a number out here, let's say we need seven hundred and fifty thousand to do X. And we know that we have a grant of five hundred thousand, we know the city can put in fifty thousand. There's gonna be fundraising or other grants of the difference, that helps you focus on how close you are, you understand what I'm saying? For this group to go beat doors, have a fundraising event or whatever, does that make sense? Okay, so here's, here's what we committed to a match, did we get the grant? Because if you don't get that one, for example, we still need restroom, so we'll be using Sandy cans. So, does that make sense?
Okay, and then here. This is ten point two seventy percent of the project, and forgive me, I just don't remember what the cost estimate was, it's been two years.
And the one on.
It it would, I think the grant was for like six hundred thousand dollars. The grant was for six hundred thousand dollars, and we had to do it ten percent.
And there was a percentage that was for the foundation, but I can't remember how much it was, I know there was fifteen thousand that we were gonna come up with either other matching brands. And fundraising.
You need for this twenty-five thousand dollar grant for the Ford Family?
Yes, we we showed them like a spreadsheet that said.
But we didn't, I mean, we just showed them our funding strategy, I mean, right, our funding strategy, yeah. So, am I capturing everything you want me to?
Right, there was fifteen thousand that was not city funding.
Okay.
And then there was an amount, I thought that the city said they had, it wasn't a lot, but there was an amount, the city said they might be able to add to that.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, um.
You know what I'm saying, so that if somebody says, like, they used to put the thermometer with, we need this much money, and here's what so-and-so's put in. This is what we have in grants, this is how much we need to get it done.
So you know, just, so, let's talk about the Scout Cabin, no one will touch, we start off by doing the roof first. No one will touch the roof until we fix the foundation. And and no one will touch that chimney until we fix the foundation, so the foundation is a hundred thousand dollars, and that's just a rough number. You look, please, 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 please.
Well, the estimates from the two bidders that were not under public work bids, last fall was about fifty-five thousand dollars.
Because last fall, but then there's also these other projects we have to do with this, there's stairs, there's, there's um some facade on the outside, so.
Right.
I think we got up to the hundred thousand dollars just to do that first level of.
But if we just did the foundation leveling, the city's match was moving the stairs back. So that was part of what the city was putting in those amounts.
Coco, I'm almost positive the budget was right around a hundred thousand, or maybe I'm, okay. Somehow we came to that with all the work that had to be done with that first phase.
There's contingencies.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, because that project's gonna be a public works project, that probably is gonna be a public works project. So what it comes down to is, we're at a precipice, where if we get that Mingus Park restroom. Do we really want to go forward with the Community Hall? And if we do, we've got to have some other strategies in addition to grants, we've got to have some fundraising. Because that building. Is kind of like, had the tree fallen and smashed it, and I'm gonna say this, and I have no shame saying this, if a tree had fell just right and smashed it. We wouldn't be having this discussion, and we would use that piece of land for something else. But every fifteen years, since nineteen forty July, when that thing was built, the discussion comes before, should we tear it down? Should we tear it down? Should we tear it down? And every time, people come in and say, we don't want it torn down, however, right now. Most people don't even know the city owns that building.
So, I think that to refocus just a a little bit, because um we're we're already rapidly running through our time. Um, which is fine, which is the whole point of of this, um, so looking at the stuff that is in progress. Um, having the amounts of grants, the, we're looking at a two-year plan. Um, I'm just gonna ask for the, for the sake of clarity. Are there any commissioners that are concerned with any of the items that are listed there as not being a priority? Not not, yeah, triple, triple negative there.
Let's make sure we're talking about the same list, so which list are you talking?
The in-progress list.
So, this list?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah, are there items on the in-progress list that we feel as a Parks Commission are no longer a priority?
On my assessment.
So that would be the focus of the entire group.
What we can do is, we can, because Kurt, um, he reminded me that we are not allowed to make decisions here. We can bring this list back as an action item at the next um commission meeting, first of all.
Yeah, and I I think there's, there's a few action items that I think we should, we should take at our next meeting. Um, the, this is, this is just for the discussion and and for the, for the sake of clarity, and our goal setting is. If we feel, if no one on the commission feels that we're out of line for pursuing these items. These five items that were the next two years, then I think, yes, pursuing how we fund them, how we move forward with them. But um continuing on and then taking action, perhaps at the our next meeting, that, yes, these in-progress items are still a priority to us. And we should move forward, does that mean that maybe funding doesn't become available and they don't actually happen? That might happen, but it's still, these are priority items for us.
Agreed.
Yeah, I I still, I, in the meantime, however, I still like the idea of looking at what the city council has set as priorities for the city. Uh, because I, I, you know, when this came after us, one of the ones that was mentioned was the city council goal one D, which was beautification. So, I, you know, anything that we can tie in to the city's goals, I think are important. And I also think if there's some city's goals that affect the parks, and we have it listed up here, we ought to consider it. Because the city council has decided that that's an important goal for the city, so I would put that in there, and then my my one last thing again is I. Included in the things I sent out to you, we are required annually, according to the ordinance. To update the pedestrian and bike plan for the city of Cusvede. So, whether or not you want to make that a priority, or you wanted to say, even though it's in the ordinance, we're not gonna do it, that's okay. But I think it's something we have to consider.
And I I think that part of how we're moving forward with that, and this is just my interpretation. By moving with the State Roads to School Plan, that's helping us move towards updating um the the TSP and the Bike and Pedestrian Plan. Um, so I I think we're taking action on that, but of course, the wheels of of time are slower than than we want, so. And that's, that's my interpretation. Yes, go ahead.
Are we, are we uh prioritizing this list over here, over that, or? Over the staff recommendations, or are we supposed to think?
I think you should look at. Hey, we can certainly provide um some suggestions. Like the the Front Street to Mingus Sheros, I, and I'm just, it's it's to a point where we can set it aside for a later date, if you want something else to take precedence. Um, but all these other ones, we are kind of, and the Front Street Bike and Ped, again, we've got thirty percent design, it's not going anywhere. Um, if you want, I'm just gonna, it's the first one, if you want the Mingus Park variation to take precedent. I mean, um, you've got three Bike and Ped projects, and then Amigus Park Restrooms, and uh, let's see, the Mingus Park Community Hall.
Jamie, Jamie, you had your hand up, I'm sorry, then we'll go back to her.
Yeah, I suppose the uh part, part budgeting, um. And I thought I heard Greg mention from a staff recommendation that we uh look for other opportunities. Uh, to fund parks, long-term funding mechanism, whatever that might be, and I recall Carmen. Mentioning one long ago, and I can't remember what it was, but it was some way to. Have. Um, some sort of. Um, some sort of trickle-in funding, uh, opportunities, and we can be looking at those as we do these other. Uh, priorities, we can be looking at. Different ways of funding parks, I mean, we don't have user fees like some state parks have, but, you know, maybe there is some avenue that, uh, other. Communities have used that would be acceptable to this community.
And I think that's a, a great task to, um, not necessarily put on the city, is, is we discussed earlier, Kurt discussed about, um, having items that the commission can take on. I think re-exploring the funding option is something that the, a task the commission can take on, and then, um, work with, with staff later, so first some tasks there. Um, Kurt, you have another comment?
Uh, I was just gonna say, the other thing to consider on some of these things is that. There are, there are limited opportunities, which we all know to write for some of these grants. For example, the Front Street Bike and Ped one, there is a time period to apply for that, and if you don't apply for it in that time period, you haven't got a shot. But the other thing is not just the time period to apply for it, some projects like that one have funding right now because they got so much infrastructure money from the federal. And, and that's gonna go away. Right, so some of these things are time-sensitive as well, so if you don't, if you don't work on them now, for example, that opportunity may not be available later.
So, a, a short comment I have is that, you know, we're talking right now about funding, but I think what we need to keep in mind, and it's already been said, is that. It's not just funding, it's a limited capacity factor, it's staff availability and staff effort. So, we can get funding, but how do you implement the funding once you get it? And so, we need to find. Ways to. Uh, facilitate or, or help staff. Come up with ways to increase their capacity, not just financially with money, but with the level of effort they have as well.
We'll do a first vote, just to see if.
We sure can, and now, I can put up another, I don't wanna complicate this any, but I can put up one more that says. If you guys wanna have any additional projects out there, I, I don't wanna, we don't want staff to drive this.
I don't wanna pitch a poll.
Yeah, exactly, we, we really do.
More than enough.
Okay, okay.
I'm just curious, if everybody voted now, and we pretended like none of these things. You know, if you were just voting, I just wanna see this right now, two minutes. And nobody cared if you had the money or not, which of the things on both these lists would you put? A blue dot on, let's just, just to see which ones would flush out.
Are we guys gonna go with blue dot being more, or are they all worth the same?
That's worth the same thing, but we're going rounds, so for right now, I'm just curious, because this is the most we've had everybody here for a while. Can we say if everybody's? Yeah, so if everybody's putting a dot regardless of. Let's do it.
Four dots for your four.
Sure, yeah, I'll ta, I'll text Carmen.
Oh, they're all the same, they're all the same, they're all the same. I think that's easier, guys, because I'm confused about that.
You know, you're gonna be four more for, uh, Ariane?
Yes.
Ariane, you wanna text, see what you want?
You know, we actually had.
I have one of the.
I don't wanna make them all by themselves, but everybody likes me.
That's okay. List of the rest that we're going for. But it's some of it's.
Somebody's gotta show up so I can guess their names.
Sure, here.
Oh, that's mine.
Little no.
Jennifer did do her.
We're not allowed to. People aren't passionate about someone. Can't tell you that.
Thank you, thank you.
There, where are you gonna be putting your dots?
Carmen did for me. All right, I think. Everyone done dotting?
Hey.
All right, what's our summary? Let's all come back together, and what is the summary?
There, I'll text it to you, or I can talk. All right. Ariane, can you hear me okay?
I can, yes.
All right, so for the in-progress ones, we have six votes for Mingus Park Restrooms. Three for Front Street to Mingus Sheros, five for the Mingus Park Community Hall. Three for this Front Street Bike Ped Plan from Dave to Kurt, and six for the Safe Routes to School. Uh, plan, and then the staff recommendation, none on Mingus Park or Aeration, ten on dredging of Mingus Pond, is the highest out of all of them. None for the Mingus Park stage lighting, none for the midlake playground equipment, none for Taylor Watson's playground replacement. Three for alternative sources for funding for parks. So, clear winners are dredging of Mingus Pond, safe routes to school. Uh, Mingus Park Restrooms and the Mingus Park Community Hall. So. There you have it. Pretty clear winners, the, I mean, overwhelmingly, the ones in progress are kind of at the top of the list. Uh, with the exception of the dredging of Mingus Pond.
And I, I think that, that dredging is a big one, and then just looking at the staff recommendation ones, the bottom three. The lighting and then the playground equipment replacement for the bottom two. Um, I think those, those are potential, um, could find donors and grants in process in, in the future, but. Yeah, I'm excited to see the. The, which, which ones filtered up to. Any other commissioner comments on the, the outcome?
Yeah, I have a comment here, I, I just am not convinced we've really given these things a proper, um, consideration. Especially in terms of, as already been noted, you know, the city council has some bigger picture, uh, priorities as well that need to fit in here. Uh, I'm thinking of the Front Street Blueprint Plan, you know, as Jennifer said, that's already.
Thirty percent design. Yeah.
So, so I just think that there. I wouldn't, I, I don't feel comfortable with too much reliance on this dot thing, I mean, I think it maybe is helpful to. Kind of as a real rough. Look at. What our priorities might be, but. You know, I think it's gonna take some additional consideration to really.
So, are you suggesting that we have a work session with the city council to see how they look at this? Before we move forward?
Well, that has been suggested, and I would support that, sure.
How does everyone else feel about that, is that something the chair thinks we should make a decision on at this time?
Can't make a decision.
We can't make a decision, but it has been requested, I believe I requested at a prior parks meeting that we look at scheduling a joint work session, um, with. With council, so that we could move forward with these items, and then.
I meant, do we think we should ask this body if that would be helpful for them to have a joint meeting? Before we move on prioritizing or not?
Personally, I, I think that, um, it might be a little overwhelming for council to hear, um, a large variety of the different things, it might be. Easier to go to them with, um, here's, you know, kind of our top priorities, here's our mid-range priorities. And here's stuff that's on the radar, but it just hasn't quite filtered up the list yet because of granting for time constraints, things like that. That, that's my personal opinion, but I'm open to what the rest of the council.
So this body needs to come up with. A top list of priorities.
Kurt?
Thanks, Carmen?
Yeah.
I was waving my arm.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't see it, it was too tiny, sorry.
You know, as I look at all of those, um. And I, and I, and you know, I'm the one who said staff has too much to do, and they do have too much to do. But realistically, I mean, if we look at those five and these two, that's seven, but let's talk about these for a second. That, you know, some of these are already in the works, the Front Street Bike Plan thing is already, there's, there's a basis there to submit it. That, that, the Front Street to Mingus Sheros, there's already been some engineering design and money spent by the city. To come up with an engineering plan, um, for that. Um, I, and you know, I, I agree with alternative sources for parks, and it should be a priority. I'm just saying, you know, some of these things require a, a lot of immediate attention, and some of them just require a lower level of attention. Is, if we included. All the ones that got dots, seven of them, would it be the end of the world?
Yeah, you know, honestly, if I can, I, the way I look at this is, there's like three D things, actually. Uh, you have. Bike infrastructure and Front Street to Mingus, you have bike infrastructure on Front Street, you have. Bike infrastructure on Safe Routes to School, all three of those are a focus. Then you have Mingus Park, which is basically Front Street to Mingus Park. Focusing on Mingus Park, it's the restaurant, it's the dredging of the pond, it's the community hall, all those are revolving around Mingus. And then, basically, the third thing, the only outlier, is funding it, so. Uh, and for me, those are the things that. I think that the council would like us to focus on, is beautification of our downtown assets and connectability of those things, so. Bike, bicycle infrastructure, so if it has to do with bikes. We need, we need to throw our weight onto that, however that might be, so we're already in a lot. Uh, lockstep with staff in terms of you guys are focusing on. Those grants, we got the Safe Routes to School, I think that can dovetail well into the Front Street Pet Bike Ped Plan. And the Sheros, I mean, all those things kind of dovetail together in my opinion. And then Mingus Park, there's lots of stuff to look at, I realize that each one of those is a whole nother can of worms, so. Yeah, I think it's like seven items, but they're really only like three different areas, so. Is these seven things that we all voted on within? A realistic. Goal focus for staff for two years?
For two years, yeah, that's, and, and Jennifer corrected me too, the Front Street Bike, um, Ped Plan stuff, you know, that actually covers the whole.
So, um, no, the, the thirty, this thirty percent is just from, um, it's Cedar Gate, I couldn't remember which. Date, date defer, so it's not, it's the north half, not the south half, but the Empire, or excuse me, the Front Street Blueprint. Is from, uh, the, the boat, the tug, the tug all the way to fur.
Yeah, yeah, and I guess the intent of this, sometimes when we put that stuff up there, people are sitting around this table thinking, well, it's just about bikes. But that really is about really, really how the whole transportation scheme is down around the Front Street area. Especially considering all the things that have been going on down there, so it's just not, I, I like your idea, by the way, I think three big things. But I just want people to realize that that thing was really more than just. And it included a bike lane on Highway one oh one.
And I, and I think that part of it goes back to, is, is funding, we're talking a lot about funding. By having these main clusters, so we have the, the, this Front Street and transportation connectivity, and we have our, our Mingus Park assets. Is there a possibility for being like, okay, here is a park asset, and we have grant funds here and grant funds here, using some of the stuff for matching. Um, making it so that it looks better for our granting application, because we're doing multiple activities of the same type in the same area. So I think, Carmen, you're, you're right in line with, with having this kind of cluster effect. Jamie?
Uh, yeah, I, that, that summarized it for me, and I wrote down three things that he talked about, and that's. Uh, the connections that we made between. The infrastructure, which is two, infrastructure is, is important for any place that we're connecting. Um, and then fun, funding stability, those are three areas that all these things fit into. Including connections where we, we talked earlier about branding, uh, people don't know where's, where is where and what is what. Uh, with the community building, et cetera, so, uh, working with these, these general areas that, and that'll help with funding too. We're looking, we're not just looking at project A, project B through F, because they need to be done, they fit into a plan of, of. Um, but general connecting and making that, that a city connected, whether it be bikeways. Pathways or better, better driving, uh, facilities. Uh, and then the infrastructure at those different places, and then how to. Fund it safely. Good job. That's why we voted, you know?
Well, I, I am kind of speaking partially from the city council point of view, like. I've heard the body, the council body say, we want to focus on Front Street. And we wanna focus on infrastructure, getting people from one oh one down to our core asset of Mingus Park. And it looks like y'all are doing that, you guys are very focused on those things that are in progress right now, kind of match all those goals. And dredging Mingus Pond obviously is a big desire for, it seems like most of us, uh.
But the big grant for that will be next fall, that's Landwater Conservation.
Strike while the iron's hot, or while the water's low, one or the other, I don't know. But do you, I mean, how do you guys feel about just like a general focus and you, as silos, and you guys? Take that and use your time within those silos to focus on those three?
Yeah, and, and the time will be spent looking for funding opportunities, is that, is that like?
Honestly, for these silos, the funding opportunities, in my opinion, obviously come through with the grant, fund, grant rider that we have. Hopefully funded with our approved budget, and then also, I, we really need to have a discussion on how to increase. And create new revenue streams, and it's gonna hurt for some people. To have to pay, to have a livable community, but we gotta ask that question of, of, of the, of the public. Because we all want things, want this place to be more livable, we want it to be safer, we want it to be comfortable. And it comes with a cost, and you guys can't just create this beautiful infrastructure without any funding. And so, that, that part right there, the alternative sources for funding, is not, it's not even on the board yet, you don't even know what it looks like. You know, it could be a prepared food and beverage tax, it could be a. Add-on fee during building permits, it could be.
Could park and recreation.
Don't say it, you know, it could be a bump, yeah, park and rec district, and then would be created a whole new taxing, uh, district, it would be a whole thing. And I think it would be amazing, but you know, we need to figure out ways to get. Y'all more resources, so that when we have these beautiful dreams, you guys can realize them for us. So, I don't know, for me, I think y'all are doing a good thing. Focusing where we want, but like. I mean, bikes getting from one asset, the bay, to another asset, the pond. That's, that's where I'm looking at.
Um, and then I, so I think now with the question is going back to, to city staff, does, does this give you any clarity? Do you want us to clarify further, um, and, um, when, should we tackle this again at our next work session, or? Or what, what direction to, to make your lives easier?
Clear as Mingus Park mud.
Somebody's gotta, somebody's gotta be a champion for each item. Somebody, somebody needs to be a champion for each one of these things. To get the field work done to help.
So, well, I, I think what we ought to do is, I think, and. At the, bring this as an action item, bring. These. These, uh, items, the, the.
These items, the, the, to the next parks commission meeting, to be. To be recommended for approval. And then we can take that to the Public Works Director and maybe set up a joint. Work session with the city council to get this, these goals, this two-year goal. Ratified and get it approved by, by council.
You, you have, you gave us thoughts and we, and we lined out seven things, if that.
Can we, can we, can we accept that these are goals, right?
Yeah.
So at the end of the two years, there's only some goals that maybe we went further on than others. And if, if that's okay with this commission, then yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay.
I'm happy to get that answer.
And I, I think it's also appropriate to have goals and then have the, have this stuff that's kind of in the wings, it's waiting to move up. It's, it's not, we're, maybe we don't have funding or time or whatever for it, but they're in the wings and waiting. So if there's an opportunity, then, then they can move further up the task. So I'm gonna ask, is there any other commissioners that have comments that they would like to make during this work session? Coco?
Are we talk, are we gonna talk about this? Well, we gave everybody a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, the Local Government Grant Program for the Mingus Park Restrooms. And the presentation's not till July, so we're ahead of the game, but we did want to give you guys ample opportunity to comment on it. It's, it's, it's pretty important, it's a, it's a big grant and to get that restrooms back at Mingus just would be amazing. So if there is expertise that you guys could bring or if there's something you think we're missing, if, if anybody is familiar with the Local Government Grant Program. We'd love to provide it, because this is the first time we've gone for this. So, at, at this, this staff, the maybe previous staff, I think, I think the. Ball Field Restrooms were funded once upon a time back in the nineties by an LGD program.
In support of the, one of the public comments that was made earlier about dedicated time for. Bicycle pedestrian issues, what is the subcommittee status of the bicycle pedestrian subcommittee? I mean, how?
So we have to, not to cut you off, Eric, I apologize, but we have to formally vote on that and we couldn't vote on it because it wasn't an agenda item at the last. Parks Commission Meeting, but it's on the agenda to vote at the next Parks Commission Meeting to establish that.
Establish the committee?
Establish the committee, correct.
That's good.
Is, is some, is somebody gonna come to that meeting with wording for that subcommittee?
Yes, you are, you just volunteered.
Because I'm gonna make you subject to public meetings and I don't think a lot of you want that, so you may not want me to do it.
If you want a decision, you have to have it public.
Last time when we had this conversation, when Nick was there telling us our, the city attorney about what we could do in public meetings. And what we couldn't do as long as we don't make recommendations, blah, 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 blah. I think there's a lot of gray area. And I think if I have a subcommittee working on something, rather than them just coming and saying, here's this, here's this, here's this, and they got all the background stuff. They know about what would be a good recommendation. And because what they're gonna do is they're gonna turn around as an individual and say, I think it's a good idea, we do this. I, I just think it's too gray not to make a public meeting, so that was, that was my two cents.
Can I maybe put your gentleman hat on for a moment? So staff was giving direction to, to not. Have a separate subcommittee because of the fact that we didn't have resources to host another public meeting. We have this work session, which we talked to our city manager, she was like, hey, it might not be every month, she, she approved that. Do you remember that discussion where they didn't want, and, and maybe that's changed and maybe you'll, you'll change that, maybe you'll bring it back to council. But that was the direction that staff received. But I, again, I, I'm just, I'm just here purely for informational purposes.
No, that makes sense. I, I feel like there's a way to have an organization that kind of deals with things off.
Well, I think we, we, we discussed having maybe a community outreach committee that was not. That is a mix of staff and community members, so it doesn't necessarily fall into the public meeting. Rules. I can't remember how I worded that, like, that was too many, too many weeks ago, so it's, it's outside of my brain. But finding a funding, finding a mechanism for doing some of the research and bringing and collecting data and information.
I did, I didn't bring it with, I didn't bring my big notebook with me. But I kind of remember when this first, not our discussion about a subcommittee, but when the Parks Commission first got to roll. Reminded that they were responsible for pedestrian and bike traffic, that there, I saw a sheet and I thought it was actually titled, you know. Bicycle Pedestrian Subcommittee, and it had some things on there, and I think that came to us from the city council.
It's the things that they want you to.
Bylaws, I forget what it was called, but I mean. A subcommittee was never established as a, as a, as a specific group, it was just met. During the commit, regular commission meetings.
Yeah, I think if I remember correctly, there's some about creating a subcommittee and then we were like, oh wait, the Parks Commission is the subcommittee.
Yeah, so, so there is, there is the, the Parks Commission, which is the official per, the, the statute. Subcommittee Bike Committee, so that is the whole entire Parks Commission. I think what we're talking about is a, a group that can go and do research, collect information and bring it back to the Parks Commission. Regarding bikes and pedestrian pathways.
Yes, I think that's important.
And then finding a way that does that so that we're following rules, but we're not relying on additional city staff resources.
Yes, could a community bike organization bring information to us that we get to investigate?
So that is my understanding or like clarity from city staff that a community bike committee that is primarily a community committee. That has no more than three commissioners, parks commissioners on it. Can collect the data and information and bring it to the Parks Commission, which is the Bike Committee also. To make decisions at our Parks Commission meetings.
There you go, sounds clear. Clear as Mingus Park dredge material.
Alright, I'm, I'm just gonna call out for, is there any additional comments or things that we would like to discuss today? We're cruising on into Coco?
Yes, I just want to remind people that are here that have volunteer needs. That the city of Cus Bay Adopt a Park is at the Volunteer Fair on June fourteenth at the library. So if you have materials or something you want me to put on the table or specific volunteer needs, please let me know and I will. Let the public know that comes into that thing that you're looking for votes. So if you want a flyer, it's gonna be in the South Coast Shopper next week. And it will be two to four P M at the Cus Bay Public Library.
Thank you, Coco. Any other additional comments?
About the master, the Mingus Park Master Pen out to commissioners, admitted final stage for ratification at the June twenty meeting.
So please review it so that we can take action on that item as well as several of the other items we discussed today. Any other additional comments? No, well, I appreciate everybody coming in today. I think this was very productive and. These informal work sessions are, are a great tool for us, so I appreciate everyone doing the additional meetings during the month. So, thank you so much and look forward to seeing you in two weeks.